Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to this August the 17th Board of County Commissioners meeting. At this time, we will call on Commissioner Larry Lancaster to give our invocation and introduce our student for the pledge. The rest of us stand? Please stand. Round heads. Heavenly Father, this evening, we are gathered here to serve and conduct the business of county government. And Father, we pray that you would give us knowledge and strength and patience with the proper balance of eternal values realizing our present needs. And Father, may all of us assembled accept our responsibilities and act with compassion when considering the feelings of other people. We pray that you would grant us a sense of justice and stewardship both now and forever. Remind us to practice the compassion of seeing people through rather than seeing through people. And Father, as our county begins a new school year, may we remember and practice daily the core values that we learned in kindergarten: to play fair, to share, to say you're sorry. And as we venture out into this changing world, Father, help us all to remember the biggest word we ever learned: look. May we always be aware of wonder, may we always hold hands, and always stick together. Amen.
Amen.
Let me introduce our Pledge of Allegiance guy this afternoon, who happens to be my grandson, Brock West. Brock is eight years old. He's in the third grade at Van Story. His parents are Greg and Christie West. Greg, his father here, one of our school board members. And Greg just put his wife and my daughter and his mother to work, and she will be teaching fourth grade again at Van Story Elementary School after last year. He has a sister, Emma, that will be eleventh grader. He has a brother, Graham, that will be a ninth grader. He's here tonight, obviously, with Greg and his number-one fan, my wife Debbie, his grandmother. His hobbies are basketball, baseball. He recently won an arm wrestling contest this past weekend, so be careful shaking his hand. It could be dangerous. He loves to read, but his favorite hobby is eating. Eating.
Oh, man, that's my own heart.
We've all got a lot in common. Brock, welcome, son. And at this time, he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. It's up to you, Brock.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, son. Hey, Tiger.
You're not done yet.
He's got a big pizza waiting on him, so he's out of here.
Good job.
Mr. Mitchell, make sure you're really doing it.
Yeah.
So you beat your granddad in arm wrestling?
Yeah, he did. That was competition. Good job, sir. Very impressive. Before we do our recognitions, one of our county commissioners has a birthday today. And I think it only appropriate that we sing "Happy Birthday" to it. Do you want to tell us how old you are, Commissioner Keating?
Mr. Chairman, I'm pleased to announce that I'm still the youngest one on this board.
Charles?
Hold up. Hold up. Hold me this time.
It's fast.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Jimmy.
Well...
Happy birthday to you.
Thank you very much.
How old are you?
One year younger than you.
accomplishments in our organization, either in the national organization, state organization, or even here locally in our county government. It's a pleasure for me tonight to recognize our county attorney. The National Association of County Civil Attorneys is an affiliate organization of the National Association of Counties, which we refer to as NACO, whose membership is composed of attorneys representing counties throughout the United States. The National Association of County Civil Attorneys is dedicated to advancing the interest and education of attorneys who represent county governments and their agencies. The organization seeks to help county attorneys keep apprised of cutting-edge legal issues facing county governments and helps to identify best practices in resolving issues confronting local county departments and agencies. The National Association of County Civil Attorneys holds its annual meeting each year in conjunction with the NACO Annual Conference. And during this year's conference in Mecklenburg County, Cumberland County Attorney Rick Moorfield was elected as Secretary Treasurer to the National Association of County Civil Attorneys. This means, folks, that as he progresses up the ladder, that he will eventually be the President of the National Association of County's Attorneys. So we're very proud of Rick. And Rick, if you'd come forward and go around and shake everybody's hand, we're very proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next award we have to present is not really a new award for Cumberland County,
but one that we can take pride in, that we seem to get every year, and that's for our Excellence in Financial Reporting Program. This year, we recognize a new person, one that we're very proud of. We appreciate the job that she does. And I'm going to try to stumble through these acronyms that are on this paper. The Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, established the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Programs. The CAFR program in 1945 established the financial reporting program in 1945 to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally-accepted accounting principles to prepare comprehensive annual financial reports that evidence the spirit of transparency and full disclosure, and then to recognize individual governments that succeed in achieving that goal. This certificate is presented by the Government Finance Officers Association to Cumberland County for its excellence in the comprehensive annual financial report and is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reports. And its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. This certificate for preparing the award-winning CAFR for 2014 has been awarded to Vicki Evans, Cumberland County Finance Director. So Vicki, if you would come forward, and I'm sure she's going to tell you that she couldn't do it by herself, she has a lot of good people working for her.
Congratulations.
I would like to recognize the finance staff most, namely Bob Tucker, who leads our annual audit, and also our leadership, of course, Melissa Cardinoli and Amy Cannon and all the other finance staff. Deborah is here, and thank you. It's a lot of hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience. At this time, we'll come to our public comment period, in which we hear comments from the public. I'll ask County Manager Cannon to read the rules for our public comment period.
Yes, sir. The public comment period shall last no longer than 15 minutes. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to make remarks. No time may be yielded to another speaker. Speakers will address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by stating their name and address.
Speakers?
We have one speaker. Our first speaker is Mr. John Smith.
Welcome, John.
John, can you hear?
All right, thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Great. My name is John Smith, 12th and Morgan Street, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Stayed at, I don't know if I said, but I believe I stayed 12th and Morgan Street. I have a couple of things I like to speak with, dealing with animal control. One such thing, I have some copies here in case you want one, but back on May 22nd, I'm looking at a piece here where Dr. Lobby says there's only 20 to 30 percent of pets vaccinated in Cumberland County, which tells me that's 70 to 80 percent. And probably, I would estimate, that's 40,000 to 50,000 animals that are not vaccinated in this county of 300,000-plus people. I'd like to know, as a citizen and a taxpayer, assuming that everybody doesn't subscribe to the Field of the Preserver, can't work a computer, how is this message getting out? Is this throw it out there with willful malice, or is it misinformation? Or what's been progressed the last 76 days or so? Probably, that's how long it's been since this has been out there.
We don't typically respond to your comments, but we'll get you an answer, John.
Okay, great. Thank you. The second thing I'd like to speak about, on July 28th, and approximately about 3 o'clock in the evening on a Sunday, I was at my mother's house, and the people next door have pitbulls. One of them got loose. I called Animal Control, who then wanted my number, who then relayed it to an Animal Control Officer by the name of Britton, who in turn called me and asked me what the problem was. So I said, well, you know, there's a couple of ladies standing in this cul-de-sac, 85, 88 years old, you know, it's a pitbull running loose, you know, can you get somebody out there? So her response to me was, I'm the only officer working. And I'm thinking 300-some thousand people. What have you had issues like? Just break out in two or three parts of the county? These dogs are very volatile. Now, she may have meant that the others were on lunch. I don't know. But I'm just thinking 300,000 people, more than 300,000 people. If you only got one officer on duty on the weekend, then you got a serious staffing problem. And so I wanted to bring that to your attention. The last thing I want to bring to your attention is, I'm a former law enforcement officer, and some of you know that and some of you don't. But however, through reliable sources through the law enforcement community, I understand that some of these animal control officers are wearing tasers or have tasers in their possession. And as you know, if you're not properly trained to carry these things, then it's a great potential risk and liability for the taxpayers and the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I assure you, we'll have someone to get in touch with you and answer your questions.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next item is the approval of the agenda, and I believe, Ms. Cannon, there's one item to pull off the agenda?
Yes, sir. I would ask that we pull Item 4E, which is a minimum housing case, number 1053-2015.
Is there anything else?
No, sir.
All right. With that in mind, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Some of.
Second.
A motion and second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cannon, Item Number Two.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Mr. Lawson, Deputy County Manager, to introduce this item.
Good evening, Chairman, Agent, Commissioners. Excuse me. Tonight, we have a presentation on the county's Critical Time Intervention Program, or CTI, which is an intensive case management program that we're implementing in the jail. This is a program that's being led by the Alliance Behavioral Health Care. This evening, to provide more information about CTI, we have Ms. Ann Oshel, who's the Chief Community Relations Officer, and also our very own Wayne Cannon, who is the Cumberland County CIT Program Coordinator. And so I would like to ask Ann and Wayne if they'll step forward. And while they're coming forward, I just want to also recognize that we have the Alliance Behavioral Health Care's Board Chair, Mr. Chris Bostock, in the audience.
Welcome, everybody.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Pleasure to be here with you. My purpose and my portion of the presentation is, well, number one, to serve as the opening act for Ms. Oshel from Alliance. Secondly, to provide you with an update on jail diversion initiatives in Cumberland County. Could you go to the next slide, please? Okay, I appreciate that. into three different categories. The first being pre-booking interventions. And those are the interventions that attempt to keep people with behavioral health disorders out of jail to begin with. Second primary category is post-booking diversion, and these are scenarios in which people with behavioral health disorders have made it into the jail. In those cases, we seek to get them out of jail, into treatment, into a stable environment. And third primary category are the community-based services and supports that are put in place for these individuals post-release. So that's the model we're going to use here. Next slide, please. Many of you know about our Crisis Intervention Team Program. It actually began back in 2009. I know many of our commissioners have been very supportive of that program over the years. Crisis Intervention Team is actually a specialized training and response program for law enforcement and other frontline responders. The objective of CIT is actually twofold. Number one, it promotes the use of verbal de-escalation in crisis situations. And number two, CIT also serves as a pre-booking jail diversion initiative, in the sense that when a CIT officer responds to a scene and an individual with a behavioral health disorder may have committed a misdemeanor crime, that officer has the discretion of extending the opportunity to go into treatment rather than be incarcerated at the Cumberland County Detention Center. Our program, to date, we have trained 653 individuals. We are a multi-agency, multidisciplinary program. On the law enforcement side, primary participation comes from the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office, Fayetteville Police Department, as well as some smaller law enforcement agencies within the county. We also have trained paramedics and quite a few telecommunicators, and proud to say this evening that we've also brought our magistrates and some of our clerk of court personnel on as well. Some other key features of our program, following every crisis event in which a CIT officer is dispatched, I receive a report, usually within 24 hours. And part of my job is to do a clinical follow-up to make sure that individual is okay the next day. But the primary reason for the call is to make sure that they are following on the plan that the officer has put in place for them to get securely connected with treatment or reconnected with a provider they may have had in the past. Couple of other points I want to make. Often, mobile crisis teams respond in tandem with our law enforcement officers. Mobile crisis teams are mental health professionals. The provider for that service in Cumberland County is Greater Image. They respond in tandem when the officer believes it would be helpful to have a mental health assessment onsite. Often, the mobile crisis team arrives, and if the officer determines the situation is safe, then they go on their way, and the mobile crisis team handles it after that. One of the biggest milestones since the inception of the program has been the establishment of the Crisis and Evaluation Unit at the Roxy Avenue Center. That unit serves as a receiving facility for CIT officers. They are able to directly present with consumers in crisis any hour of the day or night, 24/7. Our first diversion by CIT officer occurred in early December of last year, and since that time, the facility has been used about four times on average per week for the purposes of crisis stabilization and diversion. All right, next slide. All right. Structured post-booking diversion and re-entry planning for those individuals with behavioral health disorders who actually do come into the detention center. We have initiated a program which arranges for a coordinated release of those people that have been identified as eligible. Now, that release is contingent upon an acceptable and clinically indicated plan, and these individuals are ultimately released, most often released early, based on a legal mechanism worked out between the attorneys and submitted to the court. Usually, that release takes place because of a plea deal, sometimes time served by the judge, a court order, or simply, in some instances, they've served their time. But usually, most of those leave early. One of the key elements of this that I want to point out to you is that the provider that will be serving those individuals actually conducts the assessment at the detention center, so they get to meet the individual that will be released to their care, and also frequently come back to visit them until the time of release. We also conduct what we refer to as warm handoffs, which is the direct transition of the consumer leaving the detention center to the provider, and most often, they're waiting on them in the lobby. All right. Of course, on the other end, post-release, there are several services that we utilize. Most frequently, we utilize assertive community treatment services. And that is really a very intensive program for folks with serious mental illness. It involves medication, monitoring, psychiatric services, therapy, and case management in the community. We also use community support teams, which is similar to the ACT teams, but just not quite as intensive. Also, we utilize intensive outpatient substance abuse services for those with substance abuse issues. And also, our providers rely pretty heavily on vocational rehab for those individuals that have employment and vocational concerns that have to be addressed. Okay? And that is a brief snapshot of where we are today, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Oshel from Alliance.
Just a little taller than me. So thank you very much for this opportunity to come and talk a little bit about this new service. When the funding for Critical Time Intervention was released by the Division of Mental Health, Wayne was the first person I called, for the reasons that he stated. There's a strong history and commitment to decriminalizing people with mental health issues, a strong commitment and history to crisis intervention team, and we had good partnerships and conversations with our law enforcement officers about improved strategies to not only keep people out of the jail, but to prevent them from returning when they really do have a treatable mental health condition. And so I'm going to tell you a little bit about what CTI is, and then how we're going to apply it here with our target population and a little bit of the funding. So Critical Time Intervention is an evidence-based practice for persons with severe mental illnesses or co-occurring disorders with substance use that are transitioning from homelessness and other institutions back into the community. To be an evidence-based practice in mental health, you have to have at least 10 years of rigorous research to show that these particular interventions work. And providers have to go by the prescribed interventions to fidelity. And this is one service where we probably don't need 10 years of research to tell us that people are the most vulnerable when they are leaving facilities and trying to integrate back into the community. The effects of unemployment and a lack of educational attainment and poor social supports and difficulty managing their recovery are all incredible risk factors for a quick return to the detention center. This is a three-member team. It's an intensive team. There is a clinician who also serves as the team leader. We have a case manager, and we have a peer support specialist. The peer support specialist is a person with lived experience in the criminal justice system and in their own recovery. It's a nine-month, three-phase process that begins with the pre-engagement while somebody is still detained. As Wayne mentioned, this team is located inside the detention center, so when a referral is made, they can immediately go back and begin to engage the person and talk about what their needs are prior to release. Typically, what happens is that somebody is handed an appointment card that says, "Call this 1-800 number when you get out," and this is what you can expect, but there's nobody there to actually escort them out, to help them get into housing, and to say, "I'll see you tomorrow." And that's what this team will do. The nine-month process in our world is actually a long-term treatment nowadays, and there is no early release from Critical Time Intervention. It is the complete duration of the nine months unless somebody voluntarily withdraws from the service. the service. So after six months, we're not going to say, oh, you got a job, you seem to be doing okay, you're making better choices for yourself, we're going to go ahead and discharge you. They get the full nine months of treatment.